All over, right?
You go close enough. Number three.
Rinse and repeat. Um, okay, well, so we can move on to number five, yes?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, we are going to review Article eight and was it eleven B?
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you guys want to start us out, we can go from there.
Sure, so the difference between the draft that you saw a few weeks ago and this draft is I was continuing to work kind of behind the scenes on cleaning up language, on consulting with our development review team about, you know, sticking points here and there, incorporating those, taking feedback from the commission and incorporating those bits and pieces and continuing to sort of clarify places where um, one standard said one thing and one standard said something that was related but slightly different and and really try to clean up all those connections. Um, so that is the version you have today. Um, we consider this to be about a ninety percent draft. Um, with the intention today being that the commission, um, after your discussion, uh, agrees to keep this as with edits if needed as a static draft for the next about six weeks or so. Um, that then we can do more work with circulating to um, other internal stakeholders, the development review team again, and in and in more more in-depth with the fire department, with community development, with our city manager's office, et cetera. Um, but then also, um, have conversations about what is in this draft and the changes that are in this draft with our, uh, local development community. So that is both, uh, people who have done development work in this area already, other big players who have, um, done development work in our area, who may be working in this area. Um, the U-Mall ownership and management, um, leadership, talking with them about all of this, and also, um, local business owners and, um, other members of sort of the economic community in, uh, South Burlington. Those would be our main sort of targets of groups. Um, the intention too is that we'd be able to, um, publish this draft. Clearly, it's already public, but make it more obviously public on our website. Um, and have, uh, opportunity for public, the public to make further comment as well. Um. The other thing that we wanted to just highlight ahead of talking about this is at the last meeting, you had requested additional visualizations um, of what, what do these heights look like? What, what are possible buildings under this in a, in a, not a hyper detailed way, but in a general better than a gray box way. Um, in a few in, uh, specific locations in city center, adding a couple of roof, different roof lines, adding some variation in heights and really getting a better picture of what this kind of the heights that we've been talking about would look like. Um, we have talked to a local architecture firm about doing those visualizations and they will have those available to us in advance of your April eighth meeting. So we don't have them today, um, but we do have someone working on that and we, Paul and I have a few meetings scheduled with them to kind of communicate, keep in communication and make sure that the end product is something that um, is helpful to the commission and to the public, uh, as we go forward. So, um, we won't be able to provide more sort of those visuals of what, what does fourteen stories look like? What does ten stories? You know, what does this whole area look like if there's a variety around those heights that is, you know, in the long term built out?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that is in the works. So, you'd be able to, at this point, talk about anything that's in Article eight that you have questions about, if you have concerns about it. Um, if you have further, if you want to talk about heights, but understanding that we will be getting those visualizations um, in a couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the planning commission would also have the ability to move the, the full Article eight and, um, eleven B and set them as static drafts with the understanding that the height, the numbers on the heights could shift. Um, I think we got the general, uh, direction from the commission that somewhere in this ballpark is probably the right number, whether it's these numbers or whether it's a few stories lower um, remains to be seen, but we cannot, we can always publish this draft with that caveat of, these are not numbers that we're proposing, this is sort of the ballpark and after this, the commission sees visualization, they may be adjusted up or down, or, um, you know, T four may become more different than T five or, or whatever it is. Those are still, um, placeholders, but sort of good ballpark placeholders at this point.
Okay. Um, I know that you guys had five bullet points here, specific questions. Um, I don't know if it makes sense to go through each one of those and to see if commissioners have questions on any of those, or just go around the room and sort of have everyone throw their questions out?
Yeah, whatever, whatever works for you all, the questions that I included, um, are basically the highlights of the, of the bigger policy changes that are included. Um, so from the last meeting.
Okay.
So if there are particular topics in those five that you want to talk about, you certainly don't have to talk about all five, you can talk about one, or you can talk about zero, or you can talk about all five. Um, or if you're fine with all of that and you want to talk about something else entirely, like this is your meeting and this is whatever, whatever makes the commission comfortable with this being the draft that is circulated to others is what we, we want to cover today.
I like the idea of going through those five, even if the comment is no comment, just to make sure we get them and then we can, and you know, we can go on for hours about the stuff we want.
I do know that. I would never. Um, okay, well, so let's start with the first one, qualifying building breaks, uh, section has been further updated. Um, obviously there, uh, I, I know that, uh, we had talked about, I was not at the last meeting, but previous meetings we had talked about trying to get some more flexibility in there, but not lose kind of the the basis of what we're looking for, so, um, if somebody wants to start us off with Donna, you.
I got the markups here, so we can go through each of these. Um, first one is just a question on how, what it means. Um, B under, I guess that's section eight. Oh, eight point oh eight facades, B, significant building breaks. One B says building vertical plane shift bump outs setbacks by at least eight feet for sixteen.
Yeah, that, that was a little weird.
It's like, yeah, is that, is that, how, how, how does that?
So currently, um, a build, and what we see on buildings around here is, I, I don't remember if it's two or three feet, but it's considered a building break if the vert, if the plane of the building goes out or back.
Goes back eight feet for sixteen linear feet?
That's what we've proposed, because what we've been, what we've heard is some of the texture on the facades here, it adds a little bit of texture, but it doesn't, it makes, both can make construction more difficult in, in different ways and doesn't really add anything in usable space. So those numbers could be, they could be high. Um, but the intention being that if you have a step back on like, say, the, the second floor, you step back and then you have some sort of public deck space, like that eight feet is a more usable, it's a usable number of, of space, or on the floor, on the ground floor, eight feet back provides a little seating area where three feet is just kind of a bump. Um, but it's just a more impactful visual change.
And what's the sixteen feet?
The width.
The width.
Of the facade.
Oh, maybe just spell that out, because it's, it's not clear from, from writing. The next one, C, says balconies with a depth of at least two feet. And I'm like, that's not a really, that's not really a usable balcony.
So there's, there's two, then that is actually part of number, a different number of these questions, number two. Um, the second, I mean, I didn't number them, but the second bullet, um, we've included regulations on balconies to count it as building break, which is more about visual texture and vision, and breaking up the facade of a building and site amenities. So you could have a two-foot Juliet balcony, or, you know, just about a Juliet balcony that adds texture to a building and provides, you know, light and air to, to a, an apartment, but doesn't provide seating space. But if you want a balcony to count towards your site amenity seating space, it has to be deeper than that.
Oh.
So it's sort of, you can have a balcony that counts as one or both, or I guess technically neither, um, but making sure that we're encouraging balconies for both reasons that we are looking to get balconies, one being facade texture and two being civic, uh, it's not a side amenity.
Yeah, as a way to reference the other spot too, so people don't think that two feet is, is what.
Well, a two-foot balcony counts as.
No, I know, but I've. I had the same thought, I'm like, how do you, what do you do on a two-foot balcony?
Yeah, it's, it's more that you'd be able to, you know, open a sliding door or a, a small French door or something that allows some more airflow and adds to the texture of the facade, not as a accounting towards the, um, site amenity requirement.
Michael, you got your hand up. Go ahead, bud.
Yes, I, I mean, a two-foot balcony really is a mock balcony. I don't, I, I think a balcony should be functional. Um, not just, uh, as a, a decorative thing on a, on the, on the, on the side of a building. It's, uh, you know, everybody will see it for what it is.
Well, and I guess that, but I guess that's the question. So one is to have a balcony be a functional space. That's a civics, that's a site amenity. The question is, as you've been thinking about ways to make buildings appear more interesting, would a Juliet balcony also achieve that? And that's what this is trying to say of you'd be able to have the, the breaking up of buildings and be more visually interesting, some of your feedback about buildings being a little bit monotonous. I think that's, that's the question for you.
It's another option.
It's another option.
It's another option.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry, Jessica, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'd speak in support of these, especially because they're only counting as a visual thing, kind of related to these other visual items, because it's actually one of the things that one of our former commissioners, um, Monica spoke up really in huge supportive, when we weren't even trying to talk about balconies, she brought it up multiple times, that this is the kind of thing that well, actually, somebody like me, like, I can't get outside safely by myself still after two months, and it's like driving me kind of nut, nuts. Or, like, she was talking about it specifically, um, with maybe like, um, like a mother with children, who it's a really big deal to, like, gather up the children and like leave, or they're, you know, they can't leave, um, the house during nap time. But to have this just small space where you could open the door and just get fresh air and be able to, you know, you're not going far, you're not trying to go far, but just to get that like natural light and air and the outside of your physical indoor space. So, I mean, it feels like there is a use for this, and if it's really just counting towards the visual piece, that's not, you know, it seems like a nice thing to add, so.
Um. Well. Or, I mean, uh, yeah, uh, I, I mean, basically just as Jess was saying, there, there's a bunch of those in my building. They've all got these nice long sliding doors on them. I'm not my unit, but it means that you actually have quite a lot of airflow in the apartment if you want it, and it's, yeah, I mean, those, I mean, it's two, I mean, I think they're one foot. They're really, really small, but it literally is just a way to open a sliding door and, yeah, we, we're even stepping outside at that point, you're just kind of, you know, you're, you're setting outside a little, but you're more to kind of bring the outside in, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and something that I was considering when we were looking at this is the, the full depth balcony is, makes sense in cer- certain architectural styles, but when we've talked on other times about you know, buildings that have more of a historic look to them, that have, you know, uh, ornate brickwork or something like that kind of Juliet balcony with large windows is something that's pretty, it's pretty common in that kind of older building, so encouraging builders to, giving, giving them something that gives them some credit for doing that would make it more of a likelihood that they would consider doing even, like, those things that are consistent with their, their building style. So it's again, just opening up.
I agree.
Yeah. No, I, I think it's, it's good to have another option like that. Michael, did you have another follow-up question?
Yes, I, I was picking up on, uh, Jessica's reference to Monica, uh, Ostby, and yes, she was very, very vociferous about it. Um, about space, outside space, but I think she quite clearly intended that it should be usable. Um, getting a, a child and, uh, 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 a stroller and whatever else you, you might need into her two-foot wide balcony is, is not easy and not safe. I, I, I don't think we should, a balcony should be a balcony. Um, I don't think we should entertain this, um, mock balcony, as I call it. Um, and people will recognize it for what it is, I, you know, that it's, it's, it's not real. Uh, it doesn't serve a purpose other than decoration. So I'm, I'm not for limiting it to, to two feet. I think it should be deeper.
Owen?
I, I agree with Jessica, you know, I, Paris is covered, filled with Juliet balconies that are beautiful. And you open the doors and air comes in, and they're not intended for you to sit on them or out on them, and, and I don't think, I mean, I listened to some of Monica's conversations in the past, and I, I, I'm not sure she was actually saying, Michael, that she wanted this Juliet balcony big enough for a stroller. I think she was more like what Jessica suggested. Um, you got one in a nap or two in a nap, and you can't get outside and you want some fresh air. And so you open your Juliet doors or sliders or whatever and get some fresh air and some fresh light. So I, I think it could add some interest and, um, certainly some light and air to different apartments. So I, I, I don't think it should be exclusively Juliet balconies. I would hope, I mean, maybe we can do some language that we really encourage both. But I think both or would be good.
I think it, we do, I think it depends on what you're looking for. Um, you know, if you want it to be a building break or you want credit for open space.
Yeah, the intention is that developers are going to do things that they get some kind of credit for in the permitting process, so if you give them some credit for a two-foot balcony, they may do a two-foot balcony when they, if you, if you didn't give any credit, then they wouldn't do it.
Mm-hmm.
So having more apartments that have these sort of openable slide, like sliding glass or some other kind of, you know, door that allows more air into a room and allows people to even just, even if it's just sort of half a step out or a step out of, of their apartment. Um, it's just an option and giving someone credit on the visual facade, the bear, the breakup in the facade is, was the intention behind this. And the intention is not that you're getting any credit for replacing site amenities, so if you only did a two-foot balcony, you get your, your building break, but your site amenities, still, you still have to do it somewhere else in the building or near the building.
Well, it, go ahead, Paul.
Um, for a full-size balcony is eight by sixteen, is that the minimum?
So that is the, um, step backs. That's the build, the visual building break step backs. The, um, the balconies is
Six by.
Six by.
Eight?
Some, no.
No more.
It's in, it's in eleven, I'll have to pull it up. It's smaller than that.
Smaller.
Yeah. Yeah.
So six by, I'm sorry, eight by sixteen is for, if you have a big chunk of your building, basically, that.
If you're, if you're using the chunk out of your building as your building break, then that's the minimum size of the break in your facade.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, it sounds like most of us are in favor of what you guys had there, so.
It's balcony is a minimum of four feet deep and a minimum of six feet wide with a total square feet as a minimum of twenty-eight square feet. So you couldn't actually do a four by six, but it has to be at least four this way and at least six this way, and whether you go a little bit deeper or a little bit wider to get to twenty-eight, that's up, that sort of allows some more design flexibility. So it's.
Very small too, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, let's move ahead.
Uh, hold on, was it, Ryan, I see your hand up. I'm going to finish commissioner discussion on this first bullet point and then I'll get back to you, okay?
Yeah.
So, so hold on a sec, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm kind of going down through the list.
Did you have another question?
Or I, I just, I just had one, one quick question, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll, the eight by sixteen feet. I guess we think in terms of where that number is coming, of what that number kind of look like. I guess when I immediately think of like a, a building setback, you often in these kind of apart, long story apartment buildings will have like a stairway that often almost kind of takes place in like a studio apartment or something, and that often leaves a lot of dead space internally. However, they're not usually sixteen feet wide. So it's just like, I guess when I immediately said, if this was a twelve feet or even like ten feet, I would think a lot of people would just say, oh, our stairwell will just setback stairwell a little bit. I think you probably get a lot of that. Would that be something we want to consider encouraging, or we're like, no, we want it to be eight by sixteen to either make it a more usable space versus a smaller one would be very easy to apply with. But then perhaps maybe, but then maybe it wouldn't occur to Juliet balconies as much, it was very easy to apply, but just removing the dead space you had anyways with your stairwell, uh, because I think sixteen feet is kind of, it's wired in stairwell, put it that way, or most of the time.
Yeah, so those numbers came from just, uh, knowing that we wanted something deeper and eight felt more like a usable space if you decided to make it a usable space, um, for a more communal ba- balcony for like a, you know, an office suite or a couple of apartments or whatever it is. Um, that, the sort of numbers and tweaking the numbers or something like that, I think is something that I would love to hear. Um, for a feedback from some developers and architects and everybody in the next six weeks or so. Um, if the, if the general purpose and the general idea of like, yes, we want the step backs to be a little bit bigger than, you know, two feet to have, to have a bigger visual break, um, that's, that's good, good information for us, and then maybe that sort of thing about stairwells, like.
I think listen, that's more, wait, damn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
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 Yeah, we, I know, yeah.
No.
And following up on that, um, you know, it kind of depends a little bit on where your setbacks are too, because you're right, in housing, you know, eight by, an eight by sixteen, that's, that, that does affect your ability to design the floor. Um, but, you know, maybe, it may mean you have one fewer bedroom or something in that unit. It can work. It can work, but, but.
How high, I'm sorry, how high up is that? I just, just.
But, but that's what I was saying, on the podium level, the lower levels of the building, perhaps the first, you know, one to four floors. You know, you have a lot more flexibility. Yeah, you have a lot more flexibility with that.
So this is a building break, so it's not a step back per se. It's a step back for a portion of it, wherever you'd like it essentially.
Yeah.
Um, it's to show that you're breaking up the building.
My bad, I'm confusing two things.
Yeah, because, you know, because I had other comments further on about, you know, the building height and where it sets back. Because a natural setback, and this isn't right in this section, but it was mentioned in, in your, in your request for comments. A natural break usually happens at the, at the top of the building podium, wherever that is.
Mm-hmm.
And then the housing units are often set back
Mm-hmm.
quite a bit from that, you know, and it depends on the site, how you want to do it, and what's underneath it. Um, so, you know, just acknowledging that those breaks could just be on podium levels.
Yeah.
And also, yeah, so a lot of this stuff, you know, the variation, when you get into taller buildings.
Right.
It's going to tend to be more on the lower levels, and the towers may or may not have the same breaks. I mean, I, I was just sort of looking at the facade downtown of the new, you know, the new housing and that, and it's not, not a lot of setbacks in that, it's, it's pretty much a rectangular structure, um.
So, just to jump in for a second about a very related thing.
Can I just, um, this is an example in Pice Street of sort of achieving,
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, that's a beautiful building.
This is, this is going back about eight feet for at least twelve feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In this part of it here, and then the main building continues that way. So that's, that's showing a vertical plane shift for a portion of the building.
But this goes down the way.
I'm not saying that every building's going to be that, but that's an example of this.
Yeah, that, that actually won a, won a award. It's an award-winning building, that's a beautiful building.
No, no, that's. But I, I guess this goes, like, I, I think what Doug was trying to ask is, do we want to have a how deep that goes? Because otherwise you comply with it by just saying, oh, we're going to give one of the penthouse units or one of the top four, we, we just, we just only did one of them. Uh, oh yeah, okay, a few of these people in the top four are going to get balconies. That would be, you know, I mean, it wouldn't, well, you had a ten-story, if you had a ten-story building and you only had to step back on the first on the top floor, ten.
Right, so that's not going to count because building breaks get counted horizontally? So if you take the entire four-story of a building and step it back, that's great, that's fine, that may be, um, architecturally interesting, but the standard for building breaks is a horizontal standard. Meaning like, if your building is a hundred and twenty feet wide, at least X number of times you have to change that plane.
Oh, on, on every elevation?
Um, not necessarily at every elevation, but like, let's say this whole width of this table is the whole building. If you took the entire table and went back eight feet, that's not creating a break.
No, uh, uh, my question is, if you had a building that was ten floors tall and on the tenth floor only, you had a eight by sixteen step back, would that count? I don't think it should.
No, no.
It doesn't count as a building break, no.
But it does count as a building break. I, I guess I'm, this is where it's at the front, yeah.
So I, I, I confuse, I confuse what she was talking about with setback.
Is building break defined? I swear, where, without creating a back.
Okay, so, so we previously had said that to count as a building break, now I get your question.
Yeah.
It had to be for a majority of the vertical height of the building.
Majority, okay.
Yeah, but I'm thinking with Donna's comment is, is maybe because before we were talking about five or six stories, the majority of the building was the, sort of down at the podium where if we're talking about now having some, a design on the bottom and then having kind of a tower, or at least allowing that, maybe it's a majority of the first five stories, or the majority of the three stories, or whatever the.
Whatever the big podium block is.
Right, because the intention is when you're a pedestrian or you're in a vehicle and you're at ground level, what does the building look like right next to you? So maybe it's three stories, or maybe it's, or something, but it's lower than that.
Okay, that's good feedback.
Yeah, because those upper towers can kind of disappear when you're at street level, you don't realize they're even there.
Um, are, are we good on the, the second bullet point we pretty much discussed? Do we still have another question? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have one on.
Donna, can I just jump in for a second? The only thing I was going to add is that it's not substance, it's, um, and it goes to what Colin was saying, is we would also love it if you, if there are specific things that you say, you know what, it would be really great to have an architect, a developer, a finance person, a small business, like, somebody that we're intending to talk to in the next couple of weeks, like, to, if we have conversations with people and want to direct very specific questions to, you know, point, direct their attention to specific things, um, also let us know that. So like, these kinds of questions like about a stairwell and is eight by sixteen the right numbers, like, I'm flagging that as something that we want to specifically raise with architects and developers when we talk to them. Um, so if anything comes up and you're like, you know what, I'm a, a resident of South Burlington, I'm the planning commissioner, and Kelsey and Paul are planners, but nobody in this is where, is like a developer, and we want to specifically ask those professionals, just flag those for me as we go along. Yeah.
I, I did have one, but actually, Jessica, go ahead and then I'll ask my question.
Oh, you should go. Mine's about the balconies again.
Okay, all right. I, I did have a question. Um, it was, uh, qualifies as a significant building break, the change in characteristics above must be anchored by at least one entrance.
Yeah.
Or there's so.
So that is something I put in there, that is a question. Um, the intention being that the numbers for the spacing of entrances and the numbers for the spacing of building breaks are, they don't have to match necessarily, but they are, they're similar, so, uh, if we're thinking of building breaks as, we don't want it to be like fake facades of pretend buildings next to each other, but it's some of that effect is some of, some of this is breaking up the facade of the building. That is something I put in there as a question. It's, it's in there for your discussion, I'm glad you flagged it, Duncan. Do you want sort of, for example, Winuski does their code as like you have to design a facade that is anchored by doors. And then you can do another facade that is anchored by doors. We don't have that currently. Um, do we want that, or do we not care if the doors on the ground floor have no relationship with the building breaks?
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is because the doors are fairly, required fairly frequently, that it really wouldn't take very much for the building break design to be anchored by a door.
What's, so, uh, I know in the T five, it's twenty to forty feet for doors. What's the building facade, Brady?
It has a minimum, let me just.
It's on page twelve.
I don't remember what it was on that.
I think that the sods of sixty feet or less are exempt, or a hundred feet or less, if it has nice brick.
No, no, we're.
That's part, that's a different thing, but that's related. Um, just, just.
What is the, uh, measurements for building breaks? There's a certain measurement they have to be within.
Twenty-foot minimum, sixty-foot maximum.
Okay.
So it has to, you can't have all your building breaks all stacked next to each other and then have nothing, but the maximum would be every sixty feet.
Oh, okay. And the buildings were twenty to forty, I'm thinking T five.
The doors.
Doors are twenty to forty.
Yeah. So you could have a sixty-foot facade of, defined by a building break somehow, that has two doors, because you probably would have to, if it's, if you meant to sixty feet, you'd have to have two doors. Or a grand entrance, which is a different section, that would let you go wider.
It seems, I, I think that based on this twenty to sixty, it probably makes sense to anchor it with a door. Um, this is one of the areas where the code is proposed to open the box quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, the standard is three breaks every eighty feet. Now it's saying one break between twenty and sixty feet, so you get a little um, less of this sort of like, oh, you know, we're going to, you know, make it red and then we're going to make it blue. We've seen that sort of pattern a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so anchoring it with a door, at least for getting feedback from architects, we think is
I was going to say that.
a good idea. We can always take the feedback and and hear alternatives, but if you don't have it in, then you won't get a feedback.
I mean, this is, this is one where I definitely think you want to get some feedback in terms of, I mean, you know how I feel about the doors anyway. Um, this is one I think you would definitely want to get some feedback. Um, you know, are, are we unnecessarily driving up the cost of construction? I, I think there's all, yeah, I think you gave a lot of opinions on that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I agree.
It depends a little bit on your building systems too, because curtain wall, it's easy to put a door in and take it out again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm.
Whereas, you know, if you got brick facade or something here, it really isn't going to happen easily.
Um, I'm sorry, do, do we have anything else on, I'm sorry, Jessica, I know you, I got you queued up. Uh, do we have any more, um, discussion on the building breaks, or are we?
Yeah.
You do, okay, go ahead, Donna.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think under section one D, minor changes in materials. I I would suggest that maybe we just say, don't do that anymore in town center, because every building here already does it. And it would be really nice to have some variety and just say, okay, don't do that anymore. It's not a bad idea, but don't do it here. Because every building has that, and it's getting to be a little monotonous.
Which which one is that again, Doc?
It's, uh, section B, under significant building breaks, section one D.
Major change in materials? Major change in materials?
Major change in materials. It's the bottom of that page. I don't know if, why, yeah.
I mean, well, that's a, it's an option. It's not required.
It's an option, but I would say in center city, just say, just just in city center, just don't do that.
City center. Well, keep in mind that.
Because it's it's been overdone, or just point out that it's been overdone here, and you shouldn't do that if a building right next to you or around it has the same treatment.
So technically, I mean, giving, not giving them any credit for a building break that, if you do that, doesn't mean they won't do it. If they, you know, otherwise.
Then tell them not to do it. If the adjacent building has it, just don't do it. It's it's it visually, it's, um, I mean, they're nice buildings, but honestly, when you look at it, it's just like, there's this, it's it's like a jigsaw puzzle, you know, it's like, everything is kind of similar, but it's not exactly the same.
So I guess two food for thought. One, um, the standard today is again, three every eighty, so it forces a lot of that, much more so than this draft would.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so keep that in mind, and I guess the other thing is, you, um, there's a lot of city center to be built still. Um, there's not been a single new build, there's been one new building along Williston Road entirely, there've been none on San Remo Drive. Um, none within the U-Mall yet, so just as you think about like, what's left, there is a lot of that that can be still done. So if if things get removed, that means other things are gonna get repeated a lot. So if we take out giving credit for this, you're gonna see the other things being used over and over and over, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But if, but in terms of adjacent buildings, I mean, I don't see any problem with, you know, there's a thing about designing to a, um, like, designing to floor heights and, you know, and and some level of, um, relating, you know, creating a building that relates well to its neighbors without without trying to copy the style of it, you know, it's it's a delicate thing, you know, and most architects are pretty good at avoiding doing that. Um, this particular one had a seemed to have a more limited palette, you know, cuz they knew, they designed all the buildings, and they still designed them all to look somewhat similar, which is, I don't know. I I don't know why that happened, but.
I I guess I I'm okay with leaving it in there, because I think it's, if if it gets pushed out later, that's fine, but I would leave it in there for now. That's my feeling. I don't know if anybody else has any.
It's like some some architects can do it and not make it look the same, but it's not at all.
But I but I think you're you're also just looking at this street here, and these guys are right, there's a lot more to be built than just what we saw right here.
Well, I'm also thinking about up on, um, the the, uh, affordable apartment buildings that are off Kennedy Drive. That fortunately, there's probably gonna be stuff built in front of those, and you're not gonna see that. Those are truly ugly, you know, and they did exactly this. They went up, you know, there's like boxes of finish and then another box of finished color, and it's, and there's this high contrast going on, you know, whereas if it was a delicate change of one material to another, but the same color, you know, just different texture or something, it wouldn't it wouldn't be so jarring. But they're doing the same thing out in Williston, some of the most hideous buildings out at, um, not Maple Tree Place, but across the street.
Finney Crossing.
Finney Crossing, you know, some of the most horrible buildings there. I mean, they did the same high contrast, and it's 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 being so overdone right now, and it's just like, I don't disagree with what Dee says.
Mm-hmm.
I disagree with like the high contrasting things that are being done, because I haven't talked to anybody who likes that look. I mean.
I will say then, the amount of contrast between the materials, this this is very close to what was already in the Form Based Code that these buildings were designed under. The amount of contrast is not regulated. The amount of difference is not actually regulated. They could have had everything be shades of tan and just have more texture and less texture and hardy plank and then stone and then whatever, and they chose not to do that.
Right. Right.
That's not something that's regulated, and I think it's something they may choose to continue to do, or they may not, um, and I'm I'm I I'm a little, I would I would love to keep more options in than to cut them out, but that is that is me as staff and not you.
I would agree.
Well, there's a way to review stuff beforehand and just say, no, you'd use that.
Oh, well, that would separate.
You use that before, you can't, you know, you really can't do that.
I I think I think they're gonna get feedback from people.
Well, I think that's a good one to get feedback on. It's like, and just let them know, this this high contrast black and white thing is not working for people.
Okay, you talk.
I mean, a lot of people I talk to don't like it.
Not everybody, you know.
I mean, it's 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 a, no, Dunk Duncan, it's a real problem. Like, I've I've not not yours is a real problem. I'm saying, uh, read an article, and now I'm just talking about things, but about it's either moral aestheticism or aesthetic moralism. It's one or the other, and about deciding that what you like is the best thing and what everybody else likes is the wrong thing, and then other people think the opposite. So, um, regulating to a very specific aesthetic or regulating away from a very specific aesthetic can cause issues.
Yeah.
Um, is this on?
Yes, this on this, yes. I I wait, I guess I I think I I agree with both of you, I think, on this one, or rather, I think from personal standpoint, yeah, I also kinda hate the blocky route of transitions. My personal take on it is, I I sort of feel like that's a way of signaling though, that like, oh, this is a modern luxury building, it's a very trendy look. I don't like it. But again, I kind of, I don't wanna limit things too much, even if I personally like saying developers like using the signal, hey, this is a modern building, and I don't know, I think I hear where you're coming from, but I just don't want to make this too hard to comply with.
Well, trendy is the operative word.
Uh, yeah, but that's, you know.
And and we can go the other way too, unintentionally, if, you know, one of the criticisms of Act Two Fifty is it never saw a beige building it didn't love, like, all around the state. You know, very, very toned down colors.
White, white is not a natural color, I'm gonna tell you.
Were were like, you know, statewide, because there was an interest in having no contrast to our landscape, and what you see is like twenty years, thirty years of like that color. So you can go the other way too, and be like, why is every building in this neighborhood the exact same beige color? It's it's.
Sage. And, um, I just wanted to point out, the current the current Form Based Code really gave building break options as those little step backs or as changes in materials.
Yeah.
Um, and a little bit of, a couple of other things, but the idea here is partially to require the breaks themselves to be more thoughtful, but also giving more a broader palette of things that you can do in a thoughtful way. So that's part of the like,
Mm-hmm.
making the step backs bigger to count, and but then also allowing changes in window proportion or whatever, so it's you have to be thoughtful about it, instead of just, oh, we'll just do all these little step backs and up and downs and different colors and then call that good, cuz that's it's not the only thing that was allowed under the Form Based Code, but as we've said many times, the box was pretty small.
Mm-hmm.
One little tiny comment.
Okay.
What we're referring to here is what we used to call exterior decoration.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's like you had interior decoration, there's exterior decoration. It was like creating facades just by, you know, painting blocks of color on a facade, but no variation in texture, no variation in material, and we hated doing that. We hated to have to do that, and it was always the developers that said, oh, you can't vary, you can't vary things that much, you know, just change the material.
I I think I I'm in favor of leaving more options in there and seeing, you know, if something is really off, you probably will hear about it. Alright, uh, Jessica.
Oh, it's actually bullet, uh, four, so I'll wait.
Okay, alright, um.
Michael has his.
Ryan, did you have a question? You had a question. I'm sorry, you had your hand up for a while. Right, no, I'm sorry, Michael, I was calling Ryan real quick. Okay.
Yeah, just going back to the balcony thing, I think it would help with, um, confusion if, um, the.
Ryan, it's it's hard to hear you, buddy.
What about now?
Yeah, better.
That's that's a little better.
Okay, thanks. Um, eh, rather than using the term balcony by itself, to never use it by itself and define it into two or three different categories, like to either always you always use Juliet balcony or balconet for the, um, aesthetic air ventilation version that was discussed a lot, and using walkout balcony for the type that is personal to an apartment that you actually fully walk out onto. And then if you saw that email I sent to November about that really grand building in Budapest, um, they have what's called a corridor balcony or an atrium balcony um, that is used also as a hallway, but has open air or open light. And I think if you if you make three distinctions and don't use the term balcony by itself, it is both more specific to, um, anyone reading the plans, including developers, and just gets rid of a lot of the, um, ambiguity.
I guess to clarify that, we then know in this case, a balcony or a balcony would suffice for building break.
Yes.
But, yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that is a good point, that would clarify. Yeah. Um, alright, uh, balconies, are we are we done with balconies? Are we still?
Yep, I I just I agree with Duncan that we should, uh, leave it the way it is, um, and not let our personal uh, preferences guide us here. Uh, we've all, we've all been saying, we like this, we don't like that. That is a personal opinion, and I don't think that's appropriate, uh, for what we're doing.
Okay.
Separate that in our minds.
Mr. Bear.
Just a quick comment, the the new pit building in Burlington is covered in Juliet balconies, just.
I'm sorry, which one?
Their new building is.
City Place.
City Place.
I don't remember that one. Can we lean into that?
City Place.
City Pit at Burlington.
Uh, that's that's great.
Little brand building.
Can you notice when you go down?
Okay. Um.
Oh, that's gonna be nice, Juliet balcony.
Uh, step backs, um, upper story setbacks.
Yeah, so.
Have we gone over C yet?
What's that?
There's a wrong hook.
C, section C, fenestration and glazing. Are we to that section yet?
Let's skip right over it. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go go ahead, Donna. What do you what would you like to talk about?
C-three.
C-three.
Um, be because because these are not like nineteenth-century buildings.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to where you are.
Under three, upper story glazing shall comply with the following standards. Um, Kelsey, and and we were talking a little bit before the meeting about, you know, does this does this actually make sense? Since we're not, we're not really talking about, you know, nineteenth-century buildings here, and that the proportions of the upper glazing, do we even need that section?
So, um, Donna, just clarifying, looking at it now, I remembered something that we did add here, I did add here in response to our development review staff. Um, that sub I, that remnant I, um, measurement of the horos- horizontal width of the window shall be from vertical element to vertical element or edge of the window frame. Um, that they have put in to allow like banking of windows. So like, your your each glass is taller than wide, but you can put a bunch of them in a row. That's how they've been anal- that's how they've um, that's what how they explained to me how they've been determining where what the window edges are, is you could have a mullion or something else that is a vertical break in the window, that is sort of stacking vertical windows next to each other instead of a big long horizontal piece of glass.
I just wonder why this whole section is not is needed.
It was there before. And it's been, I my my role in this has been to take what was in the Form Based Code previously, from, you know, eight, nine years ago at this point, and tweak it in a in ways that are helpful and clarif- clarifying.
Find out what architects and developers think about that.
Yep.
If that's if that's seems limiting to them, and I'd go along, I'd go along with whatever they say.
To be there at all.
Yes. I agree with that, yeah.
Alright, uh, sorry, back to the bullet points, um, the step, I'm sorry, I'm going through the bullet points.
D?
Step backs.
D, exterior finish prohibited materials.
Yep, that's an that is an unchanged section from the current Form Based Code.
Tyvek, Tyvek or equivalent is not an exterior finish, so there's really no need to put that in there.
The my understanding is that is just to make sure that people don't sort of abandon projects with Tyvek on them.
Seriously?
Paul may be able to say more to that, but that is my understanding.
We don't touch our developers much, do we?
I mean, we can. It's not been an issue. It's I I I don't really have an opinion one way.
I mean, it cuz it says exterior finish material, and it's not an exterior finish material, so it should, by
Happy to do that.
By definition, not be, is it just?
Some some parts, and we don't want it.
What if it's, um, enough to, I'm moving, I'm moving on. It's a post-modern building break.
I know I forgot, but this doesn't.
Alright, alright, that's enough, that's enough.
It's framed.
Sorry.
That brings up a good point about Tyvek versus zip system. Is there any way?
Don't use Tyvek ever. Do never, never use Tyvek.
Huh? What I'm saying, is there any way to pack that into one of our ordinances or codes or whatever to forbid Tyvek in the future? I'm just asking that question.
Why do you hate Tyvek?
Probably in the energy code. Accepted accepted, um, building, accepted wall, um, construction. Um, cuz, yeah, Tyvek just, it doesn't last.
Um.
It, you know, even when it's fully covered, it disintegrates after about twenty years.
Right, that's good, that would have to be a state building code subject, um, not a, we don't, that's not really our authority.
Right, and it is.
Well, the energy code.
Right, but that's still the state.
It's a state code.
Right.
Okay, sorry. Um, alright, um, sorry, the the third the third bullet point was, uh, step backs, upper story step backs. Any questions on that at all?
I think eight stories is a great number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Donna, hold on, I'm go- I'm doing the bullet points first. Then we'll then we'll go to the other section. We're doing the bullet points first. I'd like to get through those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I I I, for example, I think of in Burlington, for example, there's a bunch of buildings that are like old, some older buildings. I mean, one comes to mind is the one that's on the corner of Saint Paul and Main. That's seven stories, no setbacks. I think that looks great. It doesn't look too monolithic. I think we should allow something like that, you know, so I I think eight's a pretty nice number, um.
So just so everyone knows where we are in the draft, we are at eight oh seven.
Seven.
B, one.
Right, so so a couple of options here. One is that you could not require a step back at all. There's nothing, and from your example, Colin.
But get a little going, but this is a seven story, like, that would be fine.
Right, right, but one of the choices is to not require it at all. Um, as Donna said earlier today, a natural architectural place would be when you've got a structural sort of podium change. So, um, like the the new.
Change of change of building use, really.
Right, yeah. Um, so, you know, we're seeing that at the City Place building, where it's commercial first two stories and then residential back from there. Um, that's some feedback that we've already gotten from one of the architects, that there may be natural places to do that when they cha- do a change of use, or when they go from steel to wood above it, things like that. Um, and another is to, um, yeah, to 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 do it like this.
It it seems to me like this this is sort of part and parcel with the height conversation too, in terms of what what do we wanna allow, and at what point do we wanna say setbacks. Um, Jessica, did you have, you had a question on this one? Oh, oh, chair, mic off.
No, it's the fourth one, about open space.
Okay, alright. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Paul.
We could possibly do, uh, graduated step backs too, so maybe, you know, like five to six feet at four stories and ten to twelve feet at eight stories, things like that. Yes.
I mean, then we discussed that a couple weeks ago, but there was concerns about that one. I I I hear, I think there was concerns about costs potentially for that. If we had to graduate, but.
So what when you, this first part paragraph says the step back may start before the top story, so if we're saying it's gotta happen at this.
And and if it, what it's saying is if it, and I'm I'm rereading this language with sort of fresher eyes, and I think I need to clean it up just a little bit, but in in phrasing, but if you have a building that is eight or more stories, you must have at least the top story stepped back by twelve feet, but your step back may start below the top story.
So you could do three to four feet on the seven or.
Below it.
Or you could do twelve feet on the third floor, and that would count as having done it.
And then and then the tower.
And then it would just go.
And you won't have to do another thing on the eight, because you've already stepped back once. You have to have a step back, yeah.
And it's gotta be a single twelve-foot step back. You can't do six and six, so you.
I think you.
That's how it's written, um.
Really?
Well, no, I guess you could read it the other way, yeah. This is what I'm saying about, I'm rereading language and going, oh.
So I guess to Paul's point, if we if you wanted to make it that it could total twelve feet, you know, in one or more step backs, I guess, that that's.
Mm-hmm. What it's saying, what it is actually saying is that the top story must be stepped back, set set back. What it's saying, what it is actually saying is that the top story must be stepped back, set setback. It has, it says setback a minimum of twelve feet, so you could do it one foot per story for twelve stories if you felt like it. That would be the extreme.
We would not.
That was horrible.
Stories. Don't 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 don't.
That's not gonna happen, so.
Don't you have to hit twelve by the eight story?
Yeah, yeah.
No, the top story of any building with eight or more stories.
Oh.
So anything below eight stories doesn't have a requirement for a step back.
So.
Really?
It seems.
I thought we were deciding it was five stories, you had to have a setback.
As we said last, we we see, we just changed that, or rather you just changed that.
It was, it was previously the fifth. The above the fourth story and they were only really allowed to have five, so it was effectively the top story of a five story building had to be stepped back.
So you could technically have a thirteen fourteen story building, thirteen stories the same, and then the top floor will be back.
That is how it's currently written, but we can change that with it.
I don't like that. That's that that seems off.
That doesn't work, yeah.
Would it, would it, so are we saying like all stories above eight stories must be twelve feet back from the first story, basically?
Mm hmm.
No, but it should be lower than that on certain places, in certain locations. You'd wanna start that setback a lot lower, cause.
Oh, I was saying.
Cause that's the apparent building height when you're on the street. Um, the the massing studies would be, it would be useful to show that.
They are going to.
In some of the passing studies.
I I think, again, this has to do with, we're talking about much higher heights than we've had before, and it has to do with where these buildings are.
Right.
Um, I I think it's a different conversation if it's in the front of the U Mall versus, you know, over at Wilson Road.
Yeah, well, and there's the section below it about anything abutting the other districts, the lower scale districts has more requirements for stepping back.
Uh huh.
Um, and sort of ha- a lower maximum height within that first section of the building, but so this is sort of the core of city center. Well, it's a lot of city center, yeah. So what I'm hearing is, oh.
Oh, oh, sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I just think that the the language uh in as written is acceptable for this particular bullet item, the bullet point.
Okay.
Really?
He likes them with how it.
He likes that. Sorry, all right, well, I, um, I'm sorry, you you were just about to say something, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Jessica, you said you were.
I was just saying in the middle of the, it's it's most of city center that would have that would have this. Um, what is currently written is that if you have a building that's over eight stories tall, you need to step back at least the top story. What I'm hearing from Colin and from others is requiring all story, and that's what Michael agreed with is how it's written. And then Colin and um Donna saying requiring all stories above eight to be stepped back at least twelve feet from. The ground floor. Is that correct?
Didn't even say above eight stories.
Oh, Colin said above.
I I think above eight stories, but so you could you could have the setback happen anywhere from one to eight. Or even in multiple cases, it has to happen somewhere within there.
Or between three and eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Um. Well, yeah, I guess I I I.
It's a bit location dependent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I still wanna be trying to box everyone in too too, I don't, I don't wanna be too crazy, cause then we get like. Situations where I go, I can't develop anything here because of the weird, but I don't know.
Jessica?
I don't know, it feels a little related to the um, like. The images we're gonna be getting at the next meeting, so. I think whatever we decide here, it'd be nice to be able to like revisit after we see those images and then also as we get feedback, so. It's hard for me to know if eight is the right number, knowing that it's what you feel from the ground and eight feels really tall, like I know. Um.
Yeah, I would agree.
You know, I I don't know, so I if if I think it's reasonable to pick one for a draft to get feedback on, but. I think this is something I'd really wanna make sure we circle back on this, and I know it's not specifically said here, but like. Total height too, like I. I think it's reasonable to get feedback and like get the images, but then to like really consider is fourteen right or. No, I think they're both kind of wrapped up together, like where these breaks are and what the total height is and the images and the feedback, so.
I agree.
I just wanna make sure we like keep ourselves open to the idea of maybe eight's not right, maybe it is five or maybe it's. Fourteen feet total or, you know, it just, you know, this feels like maybe not a final decision tonight.
And I suggest maybe for the purpose of the draft, you say that it has to be stepped back. Somewhere between the minimum stories of the building and the eight story. So in the T five, that will be the third story, it would have to be stepped back above the third and the T four because it would be above the second story. Um, up to somewhere somewhere in that realm, because and I think that's still the same thing as you were saying, Colin, of. Yes. You can do it anywhere you want below eight, but this is giving some more guidance that it's not just saying eight's our number, it's saying. It's sort of suggesting a design aesthetic that we we're looking for it somewhere in this area.
Mm hmm, yeah.
I agree.
Back on it, and you might, you might get feedback of more helpful feedback based on a range being given.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
All right. Um, all right, setbacks are. Sort of maybe kind of set or maybe not.
At least a draft that we can move forward to.
But I I think Jessica, that was a good point, because I think we really need to see the visuals of what these buildings could look like, where they might be. And I think that'll better inform us of how this should, what we think it should look like. Um, all right, T four, T five, open space, Jessica, I know you said you had a question on this one.
Yeah, and this, you know, at the last meeting I had brought up, well, I wouldn't want the balconies to be all of the open space, I want people to be able to walk outside also. And I know Paul, at the time, you said, oh, but. There is no minimum amount of open space for T four and T five, and it it feels like just something to like kind of revisit and like maybe go to that page in the. The LDRs and just make sure everybody understands that, cause there is a table that says like six percent of the gross square square footage, but then. Like the idea that it could all be off site, it just feels like this is something to like revisit here for a minute and make sure everybody's understanding. Um, what could happen, cause we had talked about maybe. Like the sum of balconies and stormwater type open space, like not adding up to all of it, but then. Also knowing there might be none onsite yet.
Yeah, so we are on um in section eight dot ten. And table eight dash one is after um section C. Oh, we did, there we go. Yeah, so Jessica, just a couple of things, um, in eleven B, we did sort of tweak, um, I did tweak some of the. The numbers and now I'm feeling like. I gotta double check that, but to make sure that you can't um. Count. Just sort of a rain garden plus something else and have that be all of your space. But now my brain is telling me maybe I didn't do that when I intended to.
So before we get into that level of detail, can you back up just a little bit and talk about?
Yeah.
So in the T five, it says six percent of building gross floor area. What are their parameters around where that can be placed?
Um, so there are the in E and. F. Is the is all the is the regulations that allow you to place that in sort of a shared space. Um, that is labeled as being off site, but it has to be um.
Continuous or or obvious.
I better find the wording to make sure I'm saying it right. Continuous shall consist of no longer, no fewer than fifteen acres.
Which one, sorry, s- just slow down, which one are you talking about first?
Large development area civic space option.
Okay, so that is available. When. The planned areas at least fifteen acres in size.
Yep.
So that is only eligible for a very large site like the U Mall or sit or Market Street, Garden Street.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So just. And then where does where does E one come in locating off, open space offsite?
Page twenty. If.
Yeah, the reason I bring this up, it just seems like we just wanna make sure it's somewhere that makes sense. And I think one of these options basically says if you're nearby a city park, that counts. And I just wanted to make sure we understood what that meant and if that's okay. Cause, cause the bullet point is a little vague on that.
But Jessica, when I talked to these guys earlier today, I did have a question on that, and I think I asked you guys, it's it. It seems to me strange that we require no, there's no minimum.
Yeah, the question, the question is, the question is more geared towards, does a building or a specific site have to include? Um, s- effectively site amenities is as opposed to just civic spaces that are the larger collective spaces. Like, do you have to have some of these small things like, let me see, what are the site amenities ones?
Like balconies.
Balconies, but also sun terrace, courtyard, indoor common area, parklet, um, private yards. Those are all things that are considered to be site amenities, indoor park, atrium. Um, so things that are in or very close to a specific building that are accessible by the residents and users of that specific building. Yeah.
Versus more of a communal. If you've got a number of buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Donna.
Comment, that specifically, I can, I can kind of imagine, cause I'm I'm looking at the amount of parking that certain buildings. Um, here in city center have. And how it, I don't know, I'm not here all times of day, but a lot of it doesn't seem to be used in the daytime. Um, I don't know if it's used all at night either. But it it strikes me that if you have more parking potentially than what the building um occupants are gonna use. That if you design that space to be flexible so that it can be used as a patio. Um, you know, not necessarily parking, that you, you know, landscaped with trees and stuff, but you know. Parking lots tend to be, tend to have trees anyway, but if you created a, created a a park-like setting. It can be used for parking at night, but actually can be used as patio in the daytime. And make it more flexible, that that could potentially give a little more flexibility on parking lot design. Particularly outdoor parking lot design, cause it it sure would be nice to see more of that space usable in the daytime. I mean, I even I even look here at the building next door and how, you know, a lot of that parking in back of the building. Would be really kind of nice space to be able to use outside, but it's parking. So nobody wants to use a parking lot, you know, with curbs and stuff like that, but potentially if it was designed with, you know, patio paving. Instead, and the landscaping maybe was a little more conducive. But but you could give credit for that and kind of encourage people to do less parking. You know, or when there's less parking needed, that you can have other uses.
Like flex space.
A little more flexible, yeah, but it would have to be designed that way, you know, so it's not like you're just gonna take a table and some chairs out in the parking lot. You know, it's gonna look like a patio. Where you can also park at night. I don't know, maybe my imagination just is a little broader than most, but I can imagine this.
Did we ever answer Jessica's question or did we get clarity on that? Jessica, I'm sorry, do.
No, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that none of these small onsite site amenities are required in T four or T five. But there's a separate category of outside area called open space, which are bigger areas and they could be located offsite. I think that's what I got out of what you said.
So civic civic spaces are the types that can be located offsite and E, and if you are, if you look at eleven B and the civic space, it's the neighborhood level. Um, table, the different, those ones that are allowed to be offsite are um include sort of walking distance. Metrics like within a quarter mile, within a half a mile, um, for different, some of these different civic space types. Um, the language that's in the draft could definitely clean this up and make it more clear about when you can have. What what offsite, if there is offsite civic space that counts, that is not the large development area. Um, with the area affected types. Um, so I can definitely add a little more clarity to when you can have sort of the neighboring park count as your civic space or not.
I I feel like there's a disconnect between the three word, like the three category, like civic space versus site amenity versus open space, like.
So open space is the umbrella term for both of the others.
Okay.
In this, in this draft, is that open spaces, you have a requirement for open space and the way that this draft is written, you could do it entirely as site amenity. Cause there's two different tables for site amenities and for civic spaces, and it's primarily based on scale of those things. Um, like a little tiny parklet is a cit- is a site amenity, but a bigger park is a civic space. Cause the scale of it makes makes it more usable to others or just to a a specific site. So open space is saying, you know, you have one percentage requirement that you could do all of one or all of the other or a mix of the two between. Like you do some balconies, but then you have a civic space that's either onsite or offsite and how that how that all works. But I can definitely work on clearing that up and making sure that's really clear.
And and to clarify that in, at least in T five, according to the conversation I had with you this afternoon, you're not required to do any of that onsite?
Correct.
Okay.
I.
If if you meet the standards in the way that the rest of it's written, correct.
Okay.
If you can, if you can ma- if you can get something approved that's fully offsite and you meet all the standards for the offsite civic space and the civic space type, correct.
Okay.
I.
Well, hold on a sec, go ahead.
I have a su- question, or okay. In turn, yeah, so in terms of the, oh, having no minimum requirement or onsite. I'm fine with that in theory, like I like the idea of like having more resources to have larger scale parks. I am a little concerned with some of the language on the contributions, saying that it's like. The contribution is the average of all lots are two acres or less within the area. I'm a little worried that the kind of place we'd wanna put a city park might actually have well above average property values, some call it somewhere central, like I'm sort of looking like. Where are these T, they where these like two acre less lots located? I'm sourcing all kind of like, some sort of like the kind of stuff on the kind of fringes, where those new townhouses are, where like. Lost it down San Remo, you got like all those ones on Mary's still.
Yeah.
I'm worried that number is too low, because we're probably got a lot, we if we're like, the the idea of that is. You pay money to a city pool to allow us to buy a park essentially, I like the original, I'm just worried the, the the way it's written is I think gonna be. Lower than the land of, than the value of the land that we probably would want to. This, we probably want any prime central, I'm worried, I'm worried the number is too low as well.
Yeah, so that calculation is from the um, the current form base code, um, that's not something that was made up for this for this update. Um, so I don't know, Paul, if you have any more background about how that was landed on as the calculation?
Um. So it was landed on in in that calculation, um, because for two reasons, one. We were trying to um average out a little bit so that we're not getting into a legal argument about whether. You know, this parcel's worth more than this parcel.
Mm hmm.
The reason that T five and T four were grouped at the time was T five under the current form base code is very, very small. It's only from, it's Market Street from uh Garden Street over to Dorset Street, so to say, all two acre parcels within T five would be one parcel.
Yeah.
With a broadened area, s- so you you mentioned the townhomes, the townhomes are not in the T four.
Okay.
So this would be the area where large buildings are allowed.
But Saint Mary is though, right?
Say that name.
Saint Mary, Mary.
Mary Street is in the P four yet.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm worried if you go, I don't know, just do like chalk like a one point two or one point five multiplier on that, I I don't know, just. It's it's not the averaging method, I'm just wondering if that number comes up with, I see, I see why that method is used, I can't immediately think about method, I'm just worried that in practice it might be too low.
I mean, we can take a look at it, it might be that.
They would actually use it?
Uh, nobody has used it yet.
Okay.
Um, everybody who has developed so far has done either wanted to put their site amenities onsite. Or they've used that large open space, one to um basically contributions towards the 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 goose park down the street. Uh, not too much, the the like goose, the goose pond park there, um.
The developer, they pooled their spaces, but that wasn't a city initiative per se.
The the developer donated the land for that stormwater slash park area, and then this was an ability for them to get credit for having donated the land to do that.
Versus giving them straight cash, essentially.
Versus not paying them to buy that stormwater.
Yeah.
Facility, cause we nee- we needed to make the stormwater facility to do the Market Street upgrades.
Hmm.
And then we said we want it to be better than just a stormwater pond, let's make it a really attractive facility and then. And then we said we want it to be better than just a stormwater pond, let's make it a really attractive facility and then. But a lot of the feedback that we've gotten frankly is. Developers, if they're going to spend money, which they are required to do onsite amenities, they would like to be able to. Um, tell their tenants, look at the site amenities that we built. So building it, you know, two blocks away is an expenditure without any benefit directly to them, so what we've largely seen is folks wanna do it. Pretty much onsite, and if not onsite, then like across the street, where it's part of the same development essentially.
Go ahead, Donna.
Following, following on that same line, um, this is under. Open space requirements, B, general requirements, section one, where it it says. The last part of this um, specifically excludes areas and. Also intended for motor vehicle use such as parking areas, driveways. Travel lanes, et cetera. And I mean, that that really, I mean, that that could be a a good topic for for some designers too. Um, to say, could you potentially see, like if particularly if. You could develop the street as a vehicular street or a pedestrian street. You know, does that give some um, additional incentive for the developer to develop a pedestrian street? If that also qualifies as open space amenity. Um, cause I don't see anybody doing pedestrian space. Because I don't think they see any advantage in it and yet these spaces, and we see it all over Montreal, very close. You know, that they're becoming very good at creating streets that work well for pedestrians and vehicles. Um, but they are definitely designed for pedestrians. And you know, it'd be really nice if we could use the open space requirement. To encourage developers to actually create um, parking areas. Uh, that that are that are flexible, that look like a space that somebody would wanna take your chairs out. In, you know, in the daytime and go sit outside. Is it, is this, you know, it's it's specifically kind of separated, this that paragraph specifically says, no, you can't. Use that for open space and say, look, with these amenities, if you design it with in this way. Um, you can use it as open space and we're trying to encourage you to do this. In these and certain locations where we really want to have pedestrian, uh, more of a more pedestrianized um. Streets. You know, it's like the major streets are here already, we've got those, I mean, I could see. Probably Mary Street probably isn't the best one, but there's other ones that we talked about last time, last meeting. But you know, if we wanna make these into more pedestrian amenities, give the developers a real incentive to do it, all in open space. And don't let him get away with T five and T four not having any. You know, cause it it, if if they have to put it in, but they can use some of the street and parking areas to create it. But it has to be designed that way, landscape architects would absolutely love this.
That almost sounds like a change in the street typology, doesn't it?
Well, no, we have to go street streets as a, as a, as a street type.
Buy it into our definition of street types, just to make sure you can't use it to create some path to nowhere or something like. Prophecy, we said, oh, if you're on. Out of that's too restrictive, saying, oh, we've gotten our city plan, these pedestrian streets or they're in the plan already. Donations to that right of way or something would count maybe, I I don't know if that meets your vision, Donna or.
But the streets are already there, it's just that, you know, just gonna give them an incentive to make it into a pedestrian street. Which allows cars to be on it, but it's mainly pedestrian.
Okay, so I was talking about different things, that there's also our pedestrian streets in the plan. That it's sort of a little vague how it was actually like a built. Can you say like you can donate it if it is part of our pedestrian street plan?
Well, you don't donate it, but you get to include it in your open space. Because, you know, you'd be creating the landscaping and you know, the, you'd be creating that space. But we're we're letting you take credit for it as open space.
Sure, sure.
Cause I think if you, if you don't give them any credit for it, why would they do it?
No, I I I like that idea, I guess it's, I I guess I'm sort of, I I I like that idea, I'm wondering if you wanna like say. You can only do that if it's a place that we have said that we want a pedestrian street to try to help us build out and now what do we want?
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense, well, I mean, not the only place, but include, it it would include places we can create streets. Cause they could, they could maybe create another courtyard or something if they're.
Talking about giving them credit for open space for taking. Parking, parking spaces and making them flex spaces or street.
Both.
Both, alright.
I guess, I definitely want to see with the parking, very specific language on that, cause I will worry what. Like, I don't know, I'm thinking of like Cool where they have like these weird semi-perious parking spaces that aren't really places you wanna hang out.
I I guess a couple of things to from, as I think about this, one, if we're successful in our downtown over the next ten years. We may find that there is very little parking that is available during the day. You know, we are currently doing a parking management study that we. Will hope both private and public sector everywhere wants to be a part of so that. You know, so the parking is optimized and maybe, you know, Allen Square sees an opportunity to bring in some revenue. So with that rubric in mind. There's a risk reward associated with a standard like this, that you might get something really great. Also, how would you feel if a car was parked there? Yes, you know, eighty-five percent of the time and somebody, you know, said, that's our open space?
I I I agree with that.
For every one person who's gonna design it really well, this is something where, you know, you.
No, I I agree with that.
Six percent of the building that you're requiring.
I'm more in favor of kind of like pedestrian streets per se, not so much allowing flex park spaces, I guess, which I guess the neighbor district would all have on that. I'm I'm worried, I I'm worried for that reason that a parking space is. Will it actually be flexible, for the reason that Paul says, but I I like some way of doing that, but it just doesn't include parking spaces specifically.
Yeah.
Do you hear what I'm saying? Like, I want the street to be pedestrian, I don't want it to account a parking space, cause that probably will have a car.
Well, yeah, the building type is certainly important, cause you know, I'm looking at buildings right now that don't have their commercial uses downstairs. So that's probably why the parking's empty now.
So.
And the other thing about about this one phrase is um, making it, making it very clear that you can't sort of have an extra large grassy island. In the middle of your parking lot and call that your open space, that's like difficult to get to because it's like an ocean of asphalt around it or or whatever, like. It's it's trying, my understanding, cause this is language that was preexisting for the most part. Um, is it's trying to prevent people from getting credit for even sub-subpar spaces. As saying like, here's this grassy island, that's two hundred square feet, look, there's my opens, that's part of my open space, that's not good.
I think an interesting example is the Trader Joe's parking lot has a really nice landscaping.
Yeah.
That is a nice, they were able to use their landscaping budget for it, but that's not a civic space. It is, it is pretty, but nobody's gonna put a lawn chair in the middle of that. Being careful to like.
Pretty hard to get across even, cause it's a swale.
Right, but like, you know, that's what this is in part trying to protect to make sure that like, you know, yes, you can get some landscape credit, but you know.
That's a usable space.
Yeah.
It'll never.
Not just usable, but.
Desirable.
Desirable space.
Well, I think there's nothing that's stopping you from saying, this is my courtyard. That's, you know, in a U shape, in a cutout in a building or something, and then it's bordering on your parking area or it's. You know, along the back, sort of a back alley street, but it's your, your, a well-designed sort of courtyard plaza type of space, which is. Has some of the urban elements to and and al- allows sort of pedestrian access around the backside of a building. But isn't replacing the traveled way with pedestrian, cause the only, the thing that came up for me, which maybe is not. A well-founded concern is like, if you have, if you let this building, say, this is my open space and I'm putting some nice pavers and a couple of planters and a bench. On the, on the road or next to the road, and then the next building says, I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna do something else, you could end up with weird patchworks if it's not. Planned well for the whole, for the, but as Colin said, more or less, like a pedestrian street needs to go from one end to the other. And not sort of weird dead ends or little spots, it's to go somewhere.
So I I guess, if I'm understanding Donna correctly, and she has a good point, is there a way to incentivize pedestrian streets? In terms of giving a developer any more credit for, because it sounds like that's what we really want, but obviously you're right about, are they really gonna build those?
Yeah, I mean.
So is there any way to incentivize something like that? I don't know if it's open space, but if there's, there's some way to.
One thing that jumped to mind is that you can upgrade the pedestrian path and then front a building on it. So that like if you're, if you have a dead middle of your lot or your block, but if you put a pedestrian street through it and you're like, I don't wanna deal with the full right of way of a full street. I'm gonna upgrade this little path to be a street, then you can build a building that's fronting that way, so that's something.
Have a sixty foot right of way, which is a big expense, right, it's much smaller right of way, thirty feet, something like that.
Yeah, might need to update it, but something in that range.
One, just comment, I guess, the one thing, when, this specifically why I talk about worried about dead end pedestrian streets is. Uh, I don't know if this is something that you, Paul or Kelsey were on the per, but the um, it's like, it's the, I think it's a UVM built. Medical Center Building on Hadley Road and Shelburne Road, where it's like, it's right up against Shelburne Road and it's got parking behind it. And then behind that, there's this like kinda garden-y type area that kinda looks like almost a pedestrian street. And it then ends on a fence, I say that because if the fence weren't there, I would, the adjacent building over there, I would walk through there like probably once a week, if not more. But there's a giant fence that stops you, it's it's basically a pedestrian walkway that dead ends needlessly on a fence. And I I guess, I I don't know the exact context, I know there's a lot of weird stuff in the feral development, how that happened with like visual stuff, like. Wanting to make sure that 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 street goes somewhere, because in that case, it's the dead end that has so much potential if it were dead ended there.
That that's a very fascinating case study, because this, and Paul, you might know this or Tim. That design, that element was something that the neighbors on the Happy Road were deeply in favor of. This was, that was, that was, that's what they.
Or so they want a fence?
They wanted, they, it was to separate the, the parking for the neighborhood. And there was a lot of history with um, Feral. Um, so this was something that the neighborhood.
I think it's a bummer when Feral that it's so disconnected, I think it's the same, but.
Further down the road, there actually is a connection, um, it's not built, but it is, um, if there's a, there's a public easement.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, I go through it and it's annoying, cause it's not built.
Not that that should be necessarily what we are aspiring for and planning, but that was, it exists because that's what they were. Actively seeking.
Point being, I don't want that to happen again, that's how I.
That would be a good question for designers and developers too. Um, how can, how can we make you think more about designing for pedestrians? And not so much for cars, because you know, there's a whole industry, traffic engineering. It focuses on getting cars and vehicles through things, but there doesn't seem to be as the equivalent. Um, attention given to, you know, getting pedestrians and bicycles through and strollers and. You know, people on their little, those little two, two-wheel scooters. Scooters and things, you know, it just, it's just not, we don't have the same requirements built in for those things and so. You know, how, given, given the center city, you know, environment. What would, what would make you, you know, more anxious to do this?
Absolutely.
Cause we want it, but you know, we we don't necessarily see it happening.
Alright. Prohibited uses. Any uh, big conversation on that? Anything stand out?
I think I marked a couple of them. Oh, yeah.
What you got, Donna?
Well, this is interesting, because the the one is. Prohibited use auto and or motorcycle sales, actually saw a car dealership inside a shopping mall. In Florida, um, and it wasn't a big shop, it was just, you know, really nice expensive cars. And that was their showroom, you know, that they use mall space to, so I don't think you can. You know, you wouldn't have all the cars there.
So it's only prohibited in the T five and non-conforming structures. So if you built a build, a new building in the T four.
You can do it.
That met all the design, the form standards that we have, like the minimum stories and all that stuff, you can do it.
Why is it, I mean, why not T five?
Cause T five is just Market Street and Dorset Street, fronting those streets and the intention being, you know, more sort of walk. By traffic and smaller scale retail and even a couple of cars is starting to get way too big for the scale.
Inside the store? This is not outside the store, this is inside the store.
Understood.
I mean, the mall spaces weren't big. Uh, actually in New York City, they do the same thing, you know, the cars aren't there, they just have models that are there, if you want to look at one, you can look at one. I don't know, I I'm not, I'm not in. I'm not crazy about that one, but I could see if somebody had a bicycle shop or some things, would we exclude a bicycle shop too? No, no, okay. So the auto, auto rental, um, even in Burlington, they have a car sharing. Um, and I think that's considered auto rental, they have, you know, car sharing, um, office space. So you go in there and you reserve, you know, that's, that's where they, it's where you do your car sharing.
I think we would consider an office space to be an office space.
Even, even though it's, it's dealing with auto rental?
That's their business, but the function is an office space. Um, auto rental in this instance would be where you physically get the car.
I have no idea where they keep owners.
With a rideshare place, you would do that, it's like one, you might have like a single one or two rideshare places, which I think probably would be fine. Maybe, I don't know, maybe do it on the T four or just, I have a part of the point on, with the rideshares, you want them right on site.
Right, well, and they're also sort of anywhere, right, like different, I mean, different rideshare, different car shares work different ways and sometimes it's just kind of, you find one nearby and. Pick it up and sometimes it's in designated spots or or whatever, but I, I would agree with Paul, that's a rideshare. Office space that has a couple of designated two, three designated spots nearby outside, wouldn't count as auto rental.
I think you get, when you get into auto rental, you're talking about washing the car, you're talking about repairing the car.
As long as it's defined somewhere in the D R B, you're not gonna get a year out for not finding it.
I just figured it's worth bringing up the exceptions, just to have a discussion, equipment, service and repair, what about computer equipment? Because I I know a guy who keeps getting thrown out of his space because they keep renting. They keep renting the, his space for more money, right now he's in a hotel room. Uh, because that's the only thing he could afford.
I'm not sure if that, I think it's, I think it's supposed to be engines, but we can, we can double check that.
Well, equipment, I mean, computer equipment is certainly.
It's a defined term, no.
Yeah, okay.
So we can, we can take a look.
Um, Michael is ready.
Yeah, no, I, are you done with your list, Donna?
Uh, no, not quite, self, self-storage, uh, certainly the typical model of self-storage would certainly apply. But I'm just wondering what all those people in all those apartment buildings, if they don't have a car, where on earth do they put, you know, their extra stuff?
So I think that's an important one for you to discuss. The buildings that have been built immediately next to us. Um, not the part facing onto the street, but the back half of those buildings, so you sort of the parts facing the parking lot. Have all the four buildings been approved for self-storage. Um, so that is what they're choosing to do, um, it's allowed currently under the form base code and so they got an approval. From the staff perspective, that does not seem like a great use of a first story in our core of our city center.
So wait, where, where?
These buildings, the ones under construction, the commercial ones with the residential above it. So the, the, the parts of the first floor facing the streets are still gonna be, you know, consumer facing.
Yep, yep.
Retail.
With the backside?
The backside like facing onto the parking lot, so you imagine, take the, the building and take the back half of them on the first story. Is be, is largely gonna be self-storage. And from our perspective.
Cause it was not written, that's prohibited.
From our perspective, that's not a great use of space. It's not employment, it's not, so.
Is it for the people in the building?
Not necessarily.
Anybody.
Oh.
No, I I I would agree, that that is not, I'm really surprised to hear that, but.
Storage, to to answer your previous question, Donna, that's like a storage locker, like when, when apartments have in their parking garage or whatever, they have like a locked area for. Bikes or motorcycle or whatever, um, that would not be, that would be part of the residential use, this is commercial self-storage.
I mean.
Wow.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. To, to, to go a step further from that, is there any appetite at all on requiring. Restorage for units, be it closet space or is, or sponge base or a storage locker, or we think that's just way. Too nitpicky into owner's requirement. Like the song's like, hey, two percent of gross area must be provided for residence storage, be it by closet space or. A storage locker or something, I mean, do we require indoor bike storage?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe this is overkill, cause like. Yeah, I mean, maybe this is overkill, cause like at the end, if you have bike storage and you have a closet in your apartment, that's usually gonna be enough, cause do we like bikies don't wanna paint an apartment, but. I don't know if that's going, like, for quality of life, it's nice having storage in your building as an apartment dweller, but. Is there any appetite to acquire that, or is that just, yeah, way too much more we wanna do? Um.
Probably not part of our conversation right now, but.
I think that's a little picky.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think for a, a developer, one of the amenities that they. Would want to offer is adequate or at least minimal. Uh, storage capacity uh within the units and for. Us to say it's gotta be two percent or I, I think is getting um way into the weeds.
I think most, most have provided a lot of times in underground parking too.
Not always.
It's not universal, but I think anecdotally, I can say that those who have historically not provided it. Have had, it's, it's more turnover. And more turnover means loss of rent.
There, there definitely are developments in this town that have, I'm, for example, a lot of stuff I'll buy, uh, I'll like grant you and stuff like that, those units have. Know it's really bad in mass storage, but yeah, I mean, you'd hope the market would take in, but so if everyone else feels like. Call it the market will figure that out, I just know, in some cases with older buildings, the market didn't figure it out and you have just like tiny little like broom closet and that's your only storage on site.
Yeah, I think, I think that happens a lot in conversions and also in sort of the older buildings, I think what we've seen more generally is that their. Developers are being more thoughtful about that and I think Helen is correct, seeing that as an essential amenity to apartment spaces.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll drop that idea, yeah.
It's also something to just keep in mind when we're, when we bring up other, other topics, if you have things about like, you know, we should count this as a side amenity or we should count something else as something else, like. We're always open to, to suggestions.
Michael.
Yeah, um, well, on, on self-storage, a, a self-storage facility, you don't want something behind the building that looked like a self-storage place on. So I think, um, and, and I, my experience is that self-storage. Is uh available to the tenants of a building and it's usually. Attached to a parking space or an area in, in, in underground parking where there's a bunch of lockers. Each tenant, um, so it should be within the building and it should be an amenity, I think it's, uh, would be. Would be irresponsible if we, if we didn't uh try to insist on that.
So just, just so that we're being clear, Michael, on, on what we're talking about, when it's being listed as prohibited, that means as a commercial use. Separate from what might be provided to a commercial or residential tenant. This is a, um, as, as its own commercial entity.
Yes.
But it, but at this point, it's not considered an amenity that they could get credit for and you're. Suggesting, Michael, that might be on the list of.
Yes.
Balconies, uh, more storage in the basement or something.
It's an amenity that, that should be available to the occupants of the building. And Paul, yeah, I understood that it wasn't commercial, but you know, um, a developer might build something like that behind. Behind an apartment building and we don't want that.
I don't think we're gonna get it.
You think we're gonna get it?
Well, we already have it.
I think it's already been.
Yeah, I'm banning them outright.
No, I, 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 I think everyone, everybody's fine with self-storage being banned.
I think Michael's point is, is the amenity question, which you can come back to, I don't have a magic solution as to what to give credit for. I think I would discourage you for giving credit as civic space or site amenities because. You're, you're eating away pretty quickly at spaces that are meant to be.
Yeah. I would think.
Human spaces.
I would think the builders would include that, but I guess they don't all. So.
Um, as to the list, the rest of the list, um, yeah, I'm worried, I, I'm concerned about. Auto and, and or motorcycle sales. Uh, auto and or motorcycle service and repair, auto rental with optional private accessory, car wash and fueling. Though, we, we have all those on Shelburne Road and I can't imagine in the T four area along Market Street. Uh, having anything like that.
I think Wilson Road is more, cause that's gonna be T four, yeah, Wilson Road is more what I was thinking in terms of that.
And San Remo.
And San Remo Drive, which already has that.
Maybe, but even on Williston Road, loo- look at the, the big dealerships down there have. A hu- a huge showroom and office and then acres of cars behind.
So, Michael, no.
Yes, I've seen what Donna has mentioned, I've seen a uh display of automobiles in. In a shopping center in this, in New York, in the, not only New York City, but in, in upstate or in Westchester. Yeah, that's completely different. A, a sho- a showroom without the inventory of cars. Maybe, but, uh, and maybe on Williston Road, but I don't know why we, you know, we've, we've. For whatever reason, all our car dealerships and repair and service facilities are on Shelburne Road. And they're all in generally the same area, um, south of um. Hannaford Drive or whatever it's called, you've got Nissan, you've got Toyota, you've got Ford, you've got Goss, you've got Audi, you've got Volkswagen, you. I mean, they're all there, uh, we don't need to uh create another. Car dealership desert. I'm, and, and as, why accommodate cars more than we have to? Donna's right. And I think it would, it would be. It would spoil our opportunities to develop along Williston Road and to some extent Dorset Street. Uh, to develop what we want, which is a neighborhood. Or neighborhoods and housing, so I'm very much opposed to. Uh, allowing these, I'm, I would like them prohibited in. T, in uh, T three, T four and obviously T five.
Kelsey, you were gonna say something?
The only thing that I was gonna say about the auto to make sure that everybody's on the same page, this is not an opinion one way or the other, is that they would be prohibited in non-conforming structures. So, uh, the sort of classic car dealership with a showroom and, and. Um, as a, as a building that's set back from the street and all that, that would not be possible. Um, you could, the only thing that would be allowed is if you otherwise are building a building that meets building frontage and the building breaks and the. Um, you know, percentage of the street that's covered with your lot and the doors and everything else, if you build a building that meets all of the form. Then you would be allowed to do these auto things, but that is not an opinion about. That I'm pro having auto-related uses in this area, it's just stating that it wouldn't be able to look like Shelburne Road, it would have to look. The whole point is that it looks like the other building.
But, you know, T three, T three plus and T four essentially um residential, largely residential. So I would say, I, my view is they should be prohibited in, in those areas.
Yeah, except for San Remo Drive, Michael, that's, that already has some auto stuff on it.
But even those, it's prohibited, there, you could not establish a new one.
New one.
All existing ones under state law can continue to exist.
They would be a non-conformity.
They're non-conformities, they can continue to exist, one other just quick note, all of these things, everything that you're seeing in this draft is actually a. Tightening in this subject area from the current code. Um, so it's not that Kelsey is advocating for their sale, it's they're actually currently allowed in T three, T four and T five. But if that's the direction of the commission to not allow new ones, I'm not gonna lose any sleep.
My respect on it is basically, or, I mean, I thi- I think I'm arguing with Mike on this one, I was saying, I do.
Will you stop interrupting me?
Oh, sorry, I thought you were.
We didn't know you were talking, Michael.
I'm trying.
I didn't hear you. Sorry.
So I would like to know what an, an equipment service and repair and or rental. How, what is the definition, is it a place where they, something like where. Uh, PCs can be repaired or telephones or cameras? Bike shop, that sells bikes and repairs them, that kind of thing?
Michael, Donna asked about that.
And?
She said they're gonna check into it, they weren't sure what the description was.
Okay, well, I would say yes, if it's that kind of, of um equipment repair. Small equipment, electronic equipment, bicycles.
I think Kelsey was gonna look into that.
Okay. Manufacturing, assembly and from previously prepared materials and components. Allowed in T three uh and T four. I don't know what that means.
T four and T five.
Allowed in T four and T five?
Yes. Yep, it's allowed in T four and T five.
Let's have a look. According to me, the, what I'm looking at, it's allowed in um non-conforming and. T three, uh, sorry, prohibited in non-conforming and T three, allowed in. Uh, but manufacturing, is that appropriate? For. What is essentially?
If, if I were to look at that, Michael, I would think that would refer to can, small electronics or computers.
Or jewelry?
Yeah, yeah.
Jewelry, jewelry.
It's, I, I don't think we're talking about engines and.
Jewelry, you know. So just as a preview for everyone, these are the uses that are, this is how it's defined in Article eight. Um, these questions about what do these things mean is something that I'm also parallel working on sort of as a citywide question. So this may be a situation where I was, we were, as I worked through the table of uses that applies citywide, that some things kind of. We end up coming, circling back on this and, you know, in the, at the end of the sort of six weeks or so. Um, when I've, we're had a little more time to work through. How things will be defined for other parts in the city and making sure it's consistent for, and cause it, consistent and or at least clear. What, what it means in, in Article eight, so this is something that is on a parallel track and I'm happy to bring it and loop it back in. Um, in a few meetings.
Uh, so you'll come back, you'll come back on the definition of.
Yep, yep.
Uses and manufacturing.
Yep.
Can I, can I get clarity, there seemed to be a um energetic conversation about auto sales and auto. Um, and motorcycle sales and repair and rental. Um, about whether you want to allow them new ones. Anywhere in the Form Based Code or not, um, getting some direction on where you are all standing would be great.
Alright, well, I'll give you my opinion right away.
I think we got Michael, I'm trying to get a sense of the commission.
Yeah.
Uh, in addition to Michael.
I, I'm okay with leaving them in, but that's my opinion.
I am personally of the opinion that I don't want, this is an area where we're very concerned with utilizing land well. I don't want any businesses that involve storing cars, like if someone wants to visit in their personal car. To see something, like people have to park, you know. I just don't want, uh, or, I don't know, um.
Alright, you know, Paul?
Yeah.
What do you feel about? Paul's agnostic.
What, okay, what, sorry, what?
We, we know you're, you don't like it, Donna?
I, I don't think the traditional auto dealership belongs in the Form Based Code area.
It wouldn't be the traditional, cause the building has to match.
The building has to match.
It's not gonna look like Shelburne Road.
The building has to match the requirements for the form, I'm one, what I just sort of asked Paul is. If we should, we could work up something about a maximum number of parking spaces that are private to that use.
Like, or I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use slight, the, the words we use in Russell, whereas at rest of cities, vehicle display.
Yeah.
Cause it's not actually parking, it is vehicle display and I think.
Well, that's total storage.
Or storage.
Yeah.
I think the point that I've heard from several people is, even if the building is conforming, you don't wanna see two hundred cars behind it. And the space dedicated to it, so Kelsey was thinking, what if it was max, if you're comfortable with the showroom, what if it maximize, you know. Something like, you know, five to ten spaces maximum dedicated to vehicle s- storage and display or that business. And I'm not, we're not advocating, we're just asking, is this?
This is an option.
I, I'm just gonna ask Helen and Jessica if you wanna.
No, I, I, I don't want car stuff, no.
No.
Make it, make it more, more difficult for people to, to get, to go to buy cars, let them go down to Shelburne Road.
Yeah, I feel like we've got a pretty big spot in the city where you can do that, like if you're really only talking about some kind of tiny little thing or if it's really more like. Bicycles or scooters, that feels different than like an auto.
I would agree.
Like if you wanna have a scooter sales, you know, maybe we just need a different use, but. Auto sales, we've got a big spot in the city already dedicated to that.
So I'm tallying three noes, um, Colin, are you a no or a yes or a?
I, I am very much against, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm against storing car, a business that requires a store storage.
So, so I'm just trying to get to sort of a, we got three people who say no way, no how. Is there anybody else who is no period? Cause I, and I think we got at least two people who are like maybe on showrooms and.
I'm less showrooms, I'm more I want a lot of car sharing.
I'm, I'm more of the maybe.
I, I want like, I want a lot of car share, but not much else.
Showroom, but I don't want the storage.
I don't, we want, I don't pair, I pride for no showrooms, but I don't have as passionate, I just don't want space be wasted by large amounts of vehicles.
We were talking about.
As an option.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, although the, the rental thing with the car sharing. We don't, if you have, if you have five cars.
Consensus to change it right now.
Yeah. So, there is not a consensus to change it?
Well, it sounds like three people don't want it. One is deeply agnostic and two are okay with showrooms.
Do you think since there's not a, a um reason to change it, we could at least have that like. Uh, limited parking. Kind of thing that you talked about, it's kind of a middle ground.
I, I have one, that this doesn't quite.
Really need to compromise on, come on.
I am very worried about car washes in particular, I don't know if you are aware, over the last five or ten years, there's been a huge increase in number of like. Essentially, large national corporations designing lots of car washes.
Okay, can we hold that, cause that's a separate use, so before we get into spiraling to a different conversation? Hold that for one minute.
Okay.
Um, where are you all landing on this?
I think we're on all car uses though, or showrooms.
It sounded like the consensus was not changing it to a prohibition, but working up a way, an additional. Restriction, restriction on the number of.
Spaces.
Vehicle storage in this place.
Paul had not spoken as to.
He said there are no cars in the future.
Right, but then he got cut off from saying anything else. I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
I mean, your point is that it's uh. Not gonna be possible to have a car showroom in Form Based Code area anyway.
Not in the traditional.
No.
Yeah, I mean, it's a kind of a moot point, really.
You see a lot in Boston where it's like luxury car dealerships have like a really fancy thing, they have like two cars and then all the cars are stored somewhere else.
So we will, we will work up a, a limited parking option, but this um conversation remains open.
Well, so for this draft, I think you wanna.
We'll leave it in the draft.
Yep.
As is, with a limited park, with a additional limited parking language on it. And then that draft will be circulated and this conversation can be had again after others review it.
And, and come up with a definition of auto. Because, because I saw a picture today, it's like, yeah, that's an auto, but it was like a one-person little electric, uh, it wasn't a scooter.
Allowed to drive on the road.
If it's allowed. They were allowed to drive on the road, so it was an auto, but it's like, you could drive that into your kitchen.
Any other uses changed?
Colin, one, talk about car wash.
Oh, car wash.
Yeah, car, cars specifically, I'm just aware, I mean, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm caveat, I'm aware that it's tricky to make a car washing conventional sense. Anyways, with our existing code, uh, with, with how the Form Based Code is, regardless though, I'm aware that over the last five or ten years, there's been a huge uptick. In essentially large property investment firms creating car washes, because they're a great way to kind of. Employees almost know once you make them automatic now, so you can basically buy a bunch of land, put a car wash on there, it's, it's sort of like, it's a. Minimum expense to pay the whole property, yeah, it's essentially it's a way to sit on land and use it to like sit in the land until someone else buys it up more. And I'm, I, I don't, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just, I'm really worried that, like, I've already seen a couple of these kind of pop up, I think on, on new. Worried that, like I've already seen a couple of these kind of pop up, I think on rich on news.
Do you, so they're currently permitted i- in the T four, but there are none?
I wanna keep it that way, BC, put it that way, cause I.
So you would like to prohibit it in T four?
How would you even put what in Form Based Code?
I think it'd be very hard.
It'd be very, very hard.
How would you?
Yeah, they're quite large.
But, you know, we still could, you could theoretically, um.
Interesting. That would.
Um, if 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 it's the consensus of the commission that you don't want them, it would be better to say that you don't want them, because what we wind up administratively having to do is somebody's like, well, you clearly allow it, so how are you gonna allow it for us? And then we say, well, you gotta meet the code and they say, well, clearly it's intended to be allowed, so you must have some way that you.
Yeah.
Want it to happen.
I I guess I I would agree with Paul, I I would say that we probably should not allow those, but that's my opinion.
All right, enough of them already.
I want a straw poll on car washes.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a straw poll, does everyone in agreement of not allowing car washes in the Form Based Code say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand.
Aye, yeah.
All right, I think they're out.
What about?
Yeah.
What about?
What's that, Michael?
Warehouse and distribution, which implies trucks. Um.
Uh.
Coming in, coming up to a warehouse. Loading and. I'm, I'm not sure, that's, that shouldn't be prohibited in all um in 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 all transits, transacts.
Good boy. So that's another thing that I'm working on is sort of the definition of warehousing and distribution, um one thing that we've run into is that I think maybe the, I think you're correct possibly with distribution. Um, we do in the city have sort of, um, I'm not gonna say call them micro scale, but small scale warehouses that serve other businesses. So you have your business and you're, it's, you know, a showroom and you buy, and you people, people go into that building and buy stuff, but then they have an another location in the city. Um, the the actual storage for their excess inventory. Um, so that's something that I'm working through in the general table of uses question is what is warehousing, what is distribution, what are the scale of these things? Um, so that's, it may fall into that same category as manufacturing, um and equipment. Uh, that I, when I'm working through the table of uses that I circle back around to you about that, um and potentially for now, we leave it as is.
Okay. All right. Um, hey, it's eight fifty-five, we have a whole nother piece to this meeting. Uh, so I don't know if we wanna. Continue this conversation and table the other piece, do you guys, where, what do you guys feel, how are you guys? Are we, do do we have a lot more that people wanna talk about in terms of? Article eight and the other stuff associated with it?
I think we've given staff enough to go home, to do their homework.
I have one quick question. Did I ask that now then?
Go quickly.
Uh, in, with cannabis is sensory cultivation only, does that mean specifically cultivation of cannabis is being banned?
In Form Based Code, yeah.
Yes, in Form Based Code.
We don't allow them in the city. Uh.
Cultivation.
Cultivation is not the same thing as as retail. As the retail, there's a whole other project for you all to look at.
That's right.
Banning cultivation.
Right.
Okay, I'm okay with that, yeah.
And that's a city council conversation, I believe.
For actual retail, yes, this is the cultivation.
Yeah, I'm, I will go ban a farm into Form Based Code.
Um, Ryan's had his hand up for a while.
I'm sorry, Ryan, uh, go ahead.
Hey, um, sorry to uh make one more comment about the auto sales thing. Um, my question for you guys and staff is, um, rather than thinking about um auto sales specifically. Um, what industries do have a large amount of product that they sell that is stored outside? And besides auto places, I can only really think of lumberyards, but maybe it is functional enough simply to with Form Based Code. Also limit the amount of external product that gets sold or um outdoor stored. Things that get sold, um and that might be enough to limit it such that um. A showroom selling Vespa's might be able to function comfortably in the downtown, but um or a a Bentley store with two Bentleys inside, but maybe not um. A Toyota shop. Something to consider.
Or a nursery.
Yes, that's our point.
Um, all right, I I'm gonna violate my own rule and I do have one other thing I want to bring. I don't think I'm.
We'll let you.
Um, and I spoke to it earlier about these guys, operable entrances, um I'm still concerned about that. Um, twenty to sixty feet, if you've got three doors that are only twenty feet apart. I still think that if we require one of those, two of those to be open, I still think that that's gonna be an issue. In terms of retail spaces. Um, and I would be really interested to get the, to hear the feedback you guys get. When you go to the folks who are building these places and also trying to rent these retail spaces out. Um, and I I'm thinking long term in terms of. You know, I I I don't wanna see us lose tenants because of stuff like that, um so I guess my my. My hope would be that we can build some flexibility to that. Somehow, you know, if we've got a tenant that, okay, there's three doors, each twenty feet apart, they only need one of them, that's the space they wanna go in, they can't do it, cause two of them have to be open. I would hate to see that happen.
So so, yeah, let let's noodle on, let let us noodle on that a little bit, there may be something about like, you know, may, right now it says every other one has to be operable, maybe it's. You know, there can't be a space more than X distance, so if you choose to have three doors close together, you're not punished for doing it. At the same time, eh pharmacies have been the recent example, pharmacies create incredibly dead space along streets. You know, they just, they do everything in their power to make blank windows. One door and then as far as they can be blank and they play lots of games to make it as blank as possible, instead of making them like attractive spaces and we leave them all over the place, so we're trying to like. Balance that so that we don't have the next iteration of that, it just kills the downtown.
I get that, but I'm also thinking when we expand, you know, on on, you know, Dorset Street with T five, I think.
I mean, market was changed.
You gonna cook the hamburgers or not?
One of the related things that at least I've been noodling on is maybe there's difference some two and four lane roads in that subject to some of your conversation from your last meeting. But we haven't, we haven't drafted that yet.
All right, um.
You have negative one minute.
Oh, wait, but wait, hang on, I, there is one last important thing. Are you comfortable with us now proceeding to share this um as as a draft? We know that, um, you know, you'll be seeing the.
Yep.
Three D in a couple of weeks, but are you comfortable?
Do you need a straw poll?
I'd love to go to straw poll, so that we know that we're following your direction.
Yep, um, so is e- everyone in favor of allowing them to go forward with this static draft to the community members and everyone else they mentioned? Uh, raise your hand or say aye.
Are we saying static draft as presented to us here or with the changes, we just, okay, with changes, okay, yeah.
With the changes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm okay, but I have a concern about the issue of of uses that we discussed, but.
Understood.
Yeah, but they're gonna make some changes and and we'll get some feed, important feedback.
Yep. Great. All right.
Okay, uh I will be, uh do my best to be time efficient on the next section here, so we're talking about um regional future land use map. Um, and we're talking about uh Act two fifty tiers, just thirty seconds of table setting here. Um, back in January, you, um Kate and Taylor from the Regional Planning Commission came and showed you the first cut of this. Um, what's in your packet is a um update to that, um regionally updated, but also specifically in South Burlington. Um, timeline moving forward, um this is, this was put out last week, communities are invited to provide feedback between now and May nineteenth. On this, um and on uh um for city councils and select boards to give their feedback about tier one B status. Uh, which I'll talk about in a second. Um, the way that we've proposed to lay this out for you all is that you all get an introduction to it tonight. Um, a little more discussion and a possible recommendation at your next meeting. Council will then get a presentation introduction at their May fifth meeting and. The opportunity to take action at that night or May nineteenth, so your timeline sort of feeds their timeline in order to meet the deadlines, so. Um. I'm gonna bring up a map and I know it's nine o'clock, so I will not be as in depth. Um, so this is the same map that you have in your packet. Um, what I wanted to highlight were a couple of things that were changed from your January draft. Um, so some of your feedback um was to uh try to be more consistent with our sewer service areas. And so generally speaking, that's what they've done, and so um the sewer service areas. Um, I'm gonna bring on this map, have these yellow outlines in them. Not show up super well on that screen, um, give me one second. That showed up even less well, great. Never know what you're gonna get.
Yeah.
Nope, fully, okay. Um. outline. Okay, a little better, um, so. Basically, south of the interstate, um, uh they have uh essentially followed uh your sewer service areas. Um, what has changed since the map that you saw a couple of months ago? Is, and I'm sort of toggling between them, is the um court farm. Uh, area, no, sorry, the the Edland area has been changed um to be shown as uh rural, where it was not in prior drafts. Um, so that's one change, uh sort of near the Eastwoods Natural Area, um, the uh. The portion of the Wheeler Nature Park that the city acquired has been shown to be conservation area. They added a village in, um as you requested, um a village designation, uh where the O'Brien East. View um development's gonna be along Kimmel Avenue. Um, and there were some minor other tweaks um about moving a transition area to being part of the neighborhood over by Lime Hill Road, but largely it matches what you saw. A couple of months ago.
So I I guess.
There we go, that's that's showing the difference.
The colors that it prints out to are a little, little harder to make out, yeah.
Washed out, yeah.
Like where it says Vermont National Country Club, what what is that considered?
So, uh, the yellow in there.
Yeah, that's yellow.
Is rural. Um, the green is conservation, yes, and really, um for planning purposes, they're all the same, the green, the yellow and the sort of like um. Turquoisey green, there are distinctions that they have to draw, um. For the, because of the guidance that they've been giving, but they're all considered rural, i.e. non-development areas, or very light development on a regional level. So the one you're looking at there, Donna, that's the heart part.
That's the heart.
Yeah. Um. The one area, um Jessica asked me to um outline this and sort of do a side by side with what we consider to be non-development areas. The best way that I can show that is with the ways, is with the sewer service areas. As I said, generally speaking. They match up pretty well, um to. Uh, what what you have done, the difference is there are some small areas that are really pretty micro area, where you might have shown like a river corridor connection. Or a habitat connector, like right? Here you see this little red outline doesn't show up, for them, the scale of that was not sufficient enough at a regional level to show that. Um, and then north of the interstate, there's a few areas that don't show up as being. They they might be an area that we've regulated as a habitat block. But um they're not conserved and from a regional level to call those rural, which is their only other category, didn't really make sense. So for example, you've regulated at the south end of the airport, um you might be able to see this sort of red outline, right where I've got my mouse right here. That's a habitat block, nothing in the regional plan overrides that, but they don't have a designation that can call that rural. And so in their context, it's just, you know, enterprise and neighborhood, so it's sort of a pixel scale issue of.
That's right, state wetlands as well, right?
There's wetlands in there, but it's not conserved by a third party and it's not a river corridor floodplain that is regulated sort of federally, so.
Yeah.
It's just, it doesn't, at a size of the whole county, they can't pick out every little piece. So you don't have to give your feedback tonight, but I wanna give a little introduction to that. Um, see if you had any questions about the map and then we can talk, we can spend more time on it at your next meeting. And if not, I'm gonna go into the second part, which is the Act two fifty tiers, cause I really wanna spend a minute just to give you a little grounding in this.
Can I ask one?
Sure.
Question first about.
Uh, Donna, and then I'll get Michael.
Um, I think this came up the last time we saw this too, that.
Yeah.
Um, that small parks and things like that aren't really included, cause they can be part of a. Let's say it could be.
They're part of it.
Land growth area, but they're part of the neighborhood, so they don't really show up, is that, that's correct, okay.
Yeah. Right. So that's correct, um, there's an example of where where the opposite is true. So many of the parks like J C Park, for example, um they're in the context of a neighborhood, they're very much a part of the neighborhood. Um, Hubbard Park shows up differently, because really, you know, Hubbard Park. Is kind of at the juncture of a lot of rural area in the city. Um, in terms of connecting the Great Swamp to things, and so it didn't. If we look at like, what's the appropriate context of it, it didn't feel appropriate to call that. The contact of that to be a neighborhood, the context of that is that it's an extension of a more rural area. So it's it's a little bit of, there's a little bit of art that goes to this. Um, to be honest. Whereas, um. That Memorial Park, which is both much more developed and bounds bounded on three sides by neighborhoods or the interstate, is much more in the context of of development. Michael?
Yeah, the the map that's in our package, that's doesn't have uh our ability to to look at the layers, does it?
It does not, it's a static map, so I asked them to give them, to give us this one that I can look at all the different layers.
Okay.
Um, but I can ask, there is an interactive map viewer, I can ask them what is. Um, you you can look at a online map that you can zoom in on though. And if you didn't get that, it's in the, it might be a little buried, I can send you a direct link.
Yeah. No further questions, Your Honor.
So the second thing I wanted to speak about just briefly, just so that you've got a grounding for your next meeting is Act two fifty. So one of the things that Act one eighty-one did was to um both set interim exemptions for Act two fifty. Where it raised the threshold of when you're in Act two fifty and it also set a path forward where um. Uh, those can become more permanent, so what I'm showing right now on this screen is uh three colors in our city. And lots of other cities, um, there's the pink that's our downtown here, um and that has a um exemption of. Uh, an interim exemption of seventy-five homes um per project, if if it's under that threshold, it's not subject to Act two fifty. The light pink that's next to it, um priority housing projects, which mean those that have twenty percent affordability. Um, up to a certain total maximum are exempt from Act two fifty. And the blue are areas, urbanized areas with a transit route and those are um temporarily allowed to have up to fifty homes. Without being in Act two fifty. Um, that's a raised threshold from the normal standard of ten homes within ten miles, within five miles, within five years, which is in our community, almost everything.
Right.
Um. These, it sounds, it looks like there's a lot of areas that are exempted. The catch to that is if you've ever been in Act two fifty, you still are staying in Act two fifty. So even with these interim exemptions, a lot of properties are still in Act two fifty. Because if they ever, if they ever got an Act two fifty permit before. They're stub.
In two thousand and six, they did a thing and it's in Act, and they were subject to Act two fifty jurisdiction, and now they wanna do another thing.
So even if their other thing is only twenty homes, they already have an Act two fifty, so they're not, they're in, once you're in, you're in. So even if their other thing is only twenty homes, they already have an act two fifty, so they're not, they're in. Once you're in, you're in.
Oh, okay.
So that's an important context for the next part of this conversation.
That's the existing law for my two.
So that's the existing, what you're seeing in those colors is the temporary until twenty twenty-seven. Raised thresholds or raised exemptions.
But again, anybody, anybody in those areas who already has an act two fifty permit, they still have to go through act two fifty.
Correct.
Okay, they're not exempt, they're never exempt.
Um.
Is there clarification if the eleven bus gets canceled through those areas then, okay.
We're getting to, okay. So, um, that's the current.
I know.
Um. What, um, the. Uh, what, what you were allowed to do moving forward? And this is, um, a local request to the Regional Planning Commission as part of their regional map. Is communities can ask the RPC to submit to the state board. Um, for what's called tier one B status. All, um, downtown centers, village centers and planned growth areas are eligible for this. Um, classification. And so when I show this on the map here, that la, that map I just showed you a minute ago. Um. Uh. This is the area in the pink and the, 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 the pink and the two pinks and the purple. Become the areas that are eligible for tier one B stats. If the, if we request it. Um, so it's a little bit more expansive than what the temporary ones are, but at large. A lot of it is overlapping the temporary. So you'll see right here, that's the temporary. Basically where the blue goes through.
Yep.
And what tier one B status means is new projects of fifty or fewer homes.
Are exempt.
Are exempt. But again, only new and only housing of fifty units. So if you're doing something that's.
Only on ten acres or less.
On ten acres or less, correct, Michael? So, uh, like a forty acre parcel would not be, would not be eligible for this tier one B status. So the, the question that is gonna be asked of. Uh, council or the council is requested to give feedback by May nineteenth is. Is the ci- city seeking tier one B status? Um, and if so, for what geography? Staff's recommendation is. Based on its fifty units, it's only new projects, it's only, as Michael said, ten acres. Um, a lot of this area is already given this temporary exemption. And the city ha- has done the homework to identify where is appropriate for development and not of development. That we would recommend that the city seek tier one B status for eligible areas. That does not include any of the NRP or any of the habitat blocks because those areas, um. We would not seek essentially. And they wouldn't get through the local review process anyway. And act two fifty does not overwrite locals. So even if they were theoretically exempted from it, it doesn't matter because they wouldn't get a local approval.
So that would potentially really encourage builder to go after smaller lots where they could build twelve units. Or something like that, which we're trying, which we're trying to do.
And, and importantly, the temporary exemptions will go away in twenty twenty-seven. Which will revert us back to, uh, ten homes within five miles, within five years. You're stuck. So if you wanna build a duplex. After you built eight units in Burlington three years ago, you'd be subject to act two fifty for your duplex. That's, that's the normal rule. That's what this is trying to open back up is in our area, that's what happens.
Are they putting that as a stopgap just to see if this, you know, how well this is gonna work and. You know, if, if, if people really dislike what's getting built, that it reverts back?
I think that the interim exemptions were put in for two reasons. One, politically at the legislature, they wanted to really. Address the housing crisis immediately. What's the way to do it immediately? Exempt more things. Secondly, the timing of it is such that regional plans, it gives regional planning commissions. A couple of years to get their plans done and approved and municipalities to. Get this work done. So I think the, the hope and encouragement is that municipalities that have good local regulations will then. Replace the interim exemptions with permits. I think that's the objective. Um, later, we won't talk about this, um, in any detail in two weeks, but there's also a tier one A status. Um, which gives full exemption of act two fifty for eligible areas in a municipality. We, in that instance, will have to demonstrate that we have certain, um. Thresholds and requirements met in our own local regulations in order to achieve that. That is a conversation for later this summer. Nothing about this tier one B status. Um, dictates any answer that you, that you would make in the future about tier one A.
To go with, with tier one B or some, uh, sorry, I'm sorry. The tier one B, that has nothing to do with our, it only has to do with this map. They aren't looking through our regulations at all.
Correct.
So any town that, any, in theory, any town the state can go for this as long as.
Has these pink.
Gotcha.
Types.
Okay, okay.
So there's a lot of towns in this, like by, by sheer numbers of municipalities, there's a, a large number of municipalities. Who are mostly, if not almost totally, the rural categories that are not eligible. Um, we are just in Chittenden County, so we have the pink areas that are eligible for tier one B. But if you're Huntington, you either don't have any or it's this big, so.
So this is the county level of this map. Um, I have turned off the layers that are not eligible for tier one B. So when you look at this, and I'm gonna show it even more starkly. Um, in the whole county, it's only these areas. So if you get out to, uh, Richmond. The only place that's eligible for tier one B is right here, right in the village. So this is sort of the story of urban Chittenden County and everywhere else.
Yeah, so it's really Burlington, us, Williston.
And village centers.
And village centers, yep. And that's intentional, right, to encourage.
And fill invalid centers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we also, and the, the thing that's nice about the, the larger municipalities be, having more staff is the, and, and. You know, more robust regulations of their own is that we're. We're, we already regulate a lot of things that act two fifty regulates. We don't regulate everything that act two fifty deals with, but we regulate a lot of it. Um, so if you take, if you have the exemption apply, um, you're not losing much. Um, regulatorily, you're just taking away a lot of process.
Right. It's, it's really removing redundancy. And then the tier one A status that we'll talk about in a little while is, is. Um, if the municipality chooses to, to take on certain responsibilities, accelerates that even further, but that's another conversation. Paul?
What are the bright pink areas and why are they, or how are they different than the rest of the pink area?
Sure. So the, uh, I'll start with the purple. The purple are what is our new town center or the downtown designations. The pink is a new category of village center. Um, it allows a municipality to start to create more than one center. So we talked a few weeks ago about starting to establish a center along Shelburne Road. So that's what this could do.
The other one is Kennedy Drive and Williston Road.
And Kimball.
Yeah.
Kimball.
Um, which is the sort of mixed-use commercial part of O'Brien East Fuse neighborhood. There's also a proposed one at the regional level that would sort of cross the Feral Street and both of the Market Thirty-two in Burlington and. So it doesn't mandate anything, but it opens up ability to potentially get focused state grants. Um, it, uh. Um, potentially lower speed limits, uh, authorized, things like that. Um, it also, under the legislation, um. Plan growth areas have to be sort of anchored by a village. And so having these spread in different places kind of. Opens up Shelburne Road as an entirety of being a planned growth area because we're identifying a focal point to it. And then same thing for Kimball Avenue, being able to do the same thing for sort of that, uh, eastern part of the city. So no action needed tonight. Um, I know it's already nine twenty, so I don't wanna take too much more of your time, but I, I wanted to give you that intro. Um, so that you have a more in-depth conversation in a couple of weeks.
Great.
Thanks.
Thing that they are, they are recognizing now that there are multiple urban centers in a lot of, you know, a lot of towns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and even not like, think about Ca- Cambridge. Cambridge has Jeffersonville and Cambridge Village.
Yeah.
So like, there can be towns that are only a couple thousand people, if that, that have two historic villages.
Well, even, and, and part of this is also enabling communities to not just think about historic villages.
Right.
But how do you transform the areas that are like, you know, the transformation that we've been seeing Shelburne Road doing? How do we allow that to happen on the Barry Montpelier Road, on the Newport to Derby Road, you know, in. Uh, Rutland Center, there's a lot of these that, there's been no tool up until now to. Incentivize and focus resources to see how do we make these better places? Already built areas that are just, you know, more built with.
Right, sprawl, it's part of sprawl correction.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool, it's good.
No, it looks, that's great.
Okay.
You wanna get rid of the minutes?
Do we wanna get rid of the minutes? Throw them out?
Fine. I'll, I'll move adoption of the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, alright. Any other business?
Right.
Thanks, everyone.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Thank you.